I'm recording.
So there.
I got Facebook.
Time is six o'clock. All right.
All right, we're live on Facebook.
Thank you.
Nice.
Everybody ready? Terrific. All right, good evening, everyone. This is the Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, July 18th, 2022. The time is six o'clock. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. Do I have any motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion by Trustee Schneider to approve the agenda and a second by Trustee Romus.
Sir.
Close enough. That's all right. I've been called worse.
Try to avoid that if possible. All right, we've got a motion on the floor to approve the agenda in a second. Is there any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so this evening, we're going to start off with a presentation, 2021 Audit Presented by CLA. Director Lee Joyce.
Thank you. Amber Druiski is with us tonight from Clifton Larson Allen. She will be presenting the 2021 audit. Before I turn things over, though, I just wanted to point out that we were able to transfer just under $89,000 to our Equipment Replacement Reserve Fund as our undesignated general fund balance exceeded 25% of the approved 2022 general fund budget. And then also, last Thursday, each of you should have received the printed report in your mailboxes. And with that, I will turn things over to Amber.
Welcome.
Thank you. I think, hopefully you can hear me. As Jessica said, you should have received the abound document, but also a PDF version if that was sent out. So I'm going to start with the, within that document, there was a bound financial report and then a couple stapled documents. I'm going to start with the bound financial report on page one. This is our independent auditor's report. The format has changed a little bit with some new standards that came out in fall. So your opinion is right at the top of the audit report now. We've audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the village of Swamaco as of and for the year ended December 31st, 2021. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the village as of December 31st, 2021. That's a clean, unmodified opinion, the best opinion we can provide from an audit standpoint. Talks a little bit about the basis for the opinions. We do not review all transactions of the village, obviously. It's a risk-based approach and a test basis that we conduct our audit on. At the bottom of page one, talks about the responsibilities of management. Management's responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. On the top of page two, and actually most of page two, talks about our responsibilities from an audit standpoint. Our responsibility is to issue an opinion on the financial statements within the standards listed on that page. Some other additional information, not anything that I'm going to cover here. If you want to read through that, it might put you to sleep a little bit, so.
Thank you.
I'll save it for later.
Absolutely. On page 13, so 13 through 15, these are the government-wide financial statements of the village. That includes all of the long-term debt, your capital assets, infrastructure, your proportionate share in the Wisconsin retirement system, and so forth. I'm just going to bring a couple things to the table here. Your unrestricted net position as a whole is about 6.5 million. That includes, as I mentioned, all of the capital assets and debt of the governmental activities. Your business-type activities is about 5.9 million unrestricted. Obviously, that tells me that most of it is your net investment in your capital assets, your infrastructure, your streets, and your water and sewer system. So your total net position for governmental was about 37 million, business-type about 36 million. A total of about just shy of 74 million. The Wisconsin retirement system was in a net pension asset position again. That's a non-cash item to the village, and it is restricted, so it is not included in that, in that total. The one thing that you will see, you won't see it on here, but I just want to make sure I draw attention to it, is we did close out the engineering, Internal Service Fund, the engineering fund this year. So you will see some transfers in between if you do read through this document. Otherwise, what I really want to focus on is, on page 16 starts your fund financials. And that's where I'm going to skip to the summary financial information, so the stapled portion. And I'm going to talk about the governmental fund balances. So your general fund fund balance stayed very consistent compared to 2020. You were at 2,209,000 in 2020. In 2021, you were at 2,202,000. So a very consistent budget year. In your budget to actual, you had a change of about $7,000. You had budgeted for a balanced budget in the original budget. After your budget adjustments, it was a change of about 21,000, and you came in at seven, so very consistent. As Jessica mentioned, your policy is to be 25%, and you were, that would lead to be 1.2 million, just shy of 1.3 in unassigned funds, and you were at about 1.35 million. So a healthy fund balance there, which is good. Obviously, that number, we recommend about 15 to 25%, depending upon what your cash flow is, what your future capital projects are, what your long-term plans are. COVID taught us that you don't know what's going to happen, and fortunately, COVID in a lot of places kind of came out on the good, better side of that, but that could be very different in a different situation. So you don't want to deplete that, so I like to see that healthy, and that's where you're at, so that's good news. Your Calavera Park had just stayed consistent with about $11,000 in fund balance remaining. Park development fees, about $115,000. Your ARPA fund, those funds are classified as unearned revenue on the financial statements. So if you do look for that revenue, it is unearned until you meet the eligibility requirements for spending. So the ARPA fund had fund balance of about $1,200, and that is the interest that is, that was earned on those funds during the year. Your excess stadium district tax money is down to about $270,000. There were some, I believe it was some park projects that were used for that in 2021. Debt service has a fund balance of about $102,000 for the year ending December 31st, 2021. Capital improvements, about three point, just shy of 3.5 million, fairly consistent with the prior year of about 3.6. Your capital construction was obviously the fire station that was expected to come down, and it has. You have about $120,000 just from some timing of bills and so forth that'll come through. Tax incremental district number one, $192,000. Tax incremental district number two, $218,000. And tax incremental district number four, just shy of $400,000. Your cemetery fund, about $102,000 remaining. That leads to a total of about 7.2 million in total governmental fund balance. Governmental fund, or fund balance doesn't always reflect cash. There are some other items in there, but overall, your funds are in a very good position and good planning. Then, before I go through the rest of that document, are there any questions just on the fund balances? Before I get into that.
Not for me. Anyone else?
Otherwise, before I go through the rest of that, I just want to talk about our internal control report, just like finish this bound document here. The internal control report is on page 87 of the bound document. As part of the audit, we do review the internal controls of the village, and we would disclose anything that would arise to the level of what we call a management letter of significant deficiency or a material weakness. So we had no non-compliance that we were required to disclose, and we have one finding, which is the preparation of the annual financial report, meaning we prepared this document. Jessica and her team go through and review it in detail, ask questions, and request any documentation for any questions. So that, very common for an entity your size, no concerns from that perspective.
But that's listed as a finding?
We, yeah, we have to disclose as a finding.
Okay. So it's more of a disclosure than actually a finding?
Correct, yep, yep. And that's where the management response is. And I can assure you, Jessica does go through that in detail in all regards, so. And that's primarily due to the extent of the disclosures with the new GASB standards and things like that, that we see that. And then a convenience factor that we prepare the, prepare the document. If there's no questions on that, I'm going to continue with the stapled summary financial information. So on page two of that summary financial information, just continues to explain the fund balance for the general fund that I mentioned. Gives you a five-year graph picture and a breakdown of the composition of the general fund expenditures, where you spend most of your budgeted funds. So that's obviously mostly in your public works and your public safety, and then some in the general government. But most, half of your funds are public safety-related, consistent with an entity your size. Page three has the long-term debt. You can see where your debt has stayed pretty constant and actually dropped down a little bit more here in 2021. Just shy of, and this is total long-term debt, just shy of about 15 million.
Could I just interrupt for one second?
Yep.
I would be very interested to know, so I think you did mention that, that in terms of the general fund and the distribution, the usage of funds, that, that the way our funds are broken up is pretty consistent with what you've seen? For communities our size?
For a community your size, most of it's going to be street maintenance, public works. And you have some full-time fire and things like that, and your police services, just by the nature of what you provide. Now, some of that can fluctuate depending upon what your development is. And then you look at conservation and development type things, so that can depend on what your projects are. Now, keep in mind, this public safety total has quite a bit, or may have, let me go actually.
Well, my only point is, it looks like we've got about 94% of our entire budget is in three areas. You know, general government, public safety, and public works. So 5% culture and recreation, conservation and development. One of the things that we have to start preparing ourselves for, should start preparing ourselves for with the upcoming budget, is to start looking very carefully at where we're spending our funds. And, and I hate to say it, but we need to start looking at where we can start to pinch pennies, because that time is coming. And we need to be prepared for that. So one of the things I'd ask is, when we look at public safety, and this maybe is a reference back to staff, I just would be curious, and it doesn't have to be for a meeting, but I would just be curious, you know, where do we stand in terms of, you know, other communities our size and our expenditures in public safety, our expenditures in all of these areas, really, just to see how consistent we are with, you know, other communities our size, given that there are special projects, just a suggestion.
Yeah, and you can get a, and that's a very great point. And I think a lot of that, too, also considers, consider what your, you know, you had the fire station project. That was a big project. What other projects are upcoming? And where do you really have to focus your needs and your resources? So that kind of changes what you're looking at. Page 73 and 74 of the bound document has a more detailed broken-down budget to actual. So your total, that total public safety there, if I just kind of hone in on that a little bit. Your police department is about 1.3 million, the fire department about 800,000. And then your public works, your highway and street maintenance is about 700,000. So that total, if you look at that, that's about, if I just do the quick math, 2.1. That's about $3 million of your 4.3 million in total expenditures. So those are some things that, you know, if you kind of dive into that a little bit, and to your point, what's the future? What's the vision look like? And that's where we kind of challenge, both from a capital perspective, but from an operating perspective. And when we talk about that unassigned fund balance, a lot of places were very fortunate to come out on the better side. But that definitely could have been a completely different story with COVID, and you don't know what will happen with that. Unfortunately, a lot of places also have aging infrastructure and aging buildings. That also has to come to what goes first, what, and who kind of makes that play. So, and some of that's priority, some of it's preference. So those are all excellent points to kind of look forward, but that can maybe help you, and then.
Very helpful, thank you.
Long-term planning as well.
Okay.
As we talked about, kind of, long-term planning and capital projects, on page three of that summary financial information, there's a breakdown of the capital improvements fund balance. So the capital improvements fund balance was $3,468,441. A 1.7 approximately of that was, is assigned for equipment replacement. And then the other two largest areas is road reconstruction at $723,000, and future capital improvements at about $680,000. And those are determined by management and the board, and can vary, but that is currently what you have set aside for future capital projects. Page four, the tax incremental districts. What we try to look at is what are the unreimbursed costs of those tax incremental districts? And what's the life of those? Are you going to be able to recover your, your investment over the life of those tax incremental districts through the property tax increments? So tax incremental district number one has net unreimbursed project costs of just over $1 million. Tax incremental district number two, about $549,000. And tax incremental district number four has, actually, they've recovered $396,000. Obviously, that, you have some time left on those districts, but you want to continue to monitor what are the projects, what are the, what's outstanding debt on that, and what's the life? And then values are good right now, so continuing to build off of that, so. That, the following just gives a breakdown of the debt payments by year as well. Page five, this starts your enterprise funds, so proprietary. Your garbage and recycling, from an operating perspective, had a change in net position of about $47,000 compared to a deficit of $36,000 in 2020. Most of that had, was due to a change in expenses. Your revenues went up slightly, and your expenses from maintenance and things like that went down just a little bit. The engineering department, Internal Service Fund, as I mentioned, we closed this fund out in 2021 as of December 31st, 2021, so that's why you do see some activity there. It was as of the end of the year, and that change in net position was $187,000. On page six, the water utility operating results. The change in net position for the water was $285,000. And I just want to make sure I grab this number right. So when we talk about proprietary funds, we like to look at what the cash flows are, because there's a lot of non-cash type items in here. Your Wisconsin retirement system impacts are all in these expense totals, and that can kind of skew things sometimes. So your cash flow from operations for the water, we like to say that, I want to make sure I grab the right page here. Your cash flow from operations was about 1.1 million, leading to a change in, that's total, excuse me, water utility, was a deficit of $150,000 in total cash. Cash from operations was $250,000. And what that tells me is that you are not generating enough cash from your cash from operations to cover your debt and your capital. What that usually leads to is a rate case, which I believe, from what we requested, because we requested is already in the works and was a requirement per the PSC guidelines as well. But that's, and that can fluctuate depending on debt payments. Sometimes there's a significant capital item or maintenance item that can happen, so we just like to look at trends. But for 2021, there was a deficit change of $150,000. The sewer utility, if I look at that, the change in net position was $765,000 to the positive, but your cash was a change of $300,000 to the positive. So the sewer in the sewer, the village has a lot more control over, because you can control your rates. So that usually is not an issue. Usually, it's sewer borrowing to water and so forth, or changing allocations. The other item, if I just flip back to water here, if you look at the rate of return, there was a water tower repainting, and that is expensed per the PSC, and that led to a rate of return of negative 1.1, 1.1%, excuse me. That was, I think, about $270,000, $240,000? If I remember right?
Somewhere.
Somewhere in there. So that's a large portion of that. Any questions on those items? If not, the last document that I have to run through is the stapled governance communication. Accounting policies, there's no new accounting policies for 2021. The accounting estimates that are included include the depreciable life of the capital assets, your accumulated sick leave, and the net pension asset liability and deferred inflows and outflows for the Wisconsin retirement system. There was no difficulties encountered in performing the audit and no disagreements with management. The remaining portion of that is the management representation letter, management taking responsibility for the financial statements. Any questions?
Doesn't appear so.
Excellent. Otherwise, thank you, Jessica. You and your team, always a help and great to work with. So if there are any questions that come up after Jessica and Alex both have my contact information, feel free to reach out, and we'll be happy to answer them.
Appreciate the detailed report. I mean, that's probably why there aren't any questions, because it's all over here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, item number six, public appearances. So at this time, the public may address the village board on any item that's not on the schedule this evening. If you would, please come forward, clearly provide us your name and address, share with us what's on your mind. No action can be taken on these items this evening. However, they might be referred back to staff for future review. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak at this time? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. Next item is number seven, consent agenda. It consists of the previous minutes of the village board dated 6/20/2022, B, 2021 TID District 1, 2, and 4 reports, Item C, June 2022 Municipal Court Report, D, Operator License Denial, Kara M. Mason, and E, June 2022 Recreation Report. Does anyone have any questions on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Very well. We have a motion on the floor to approve, and we have a second by Trustee Romus. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. All right, item number eight, A, 2022-2023 Liquor License Amendments. Standing in this evening for Clerk Bartoletti is Deputy Clerk Vanen Hoofel.
Thank you. You have before you an amendment from Ticks Harbor Lights LLC. They are asking for amendment to their liquor license to add the east outdoor enclosed patio area and a south outdoor enclosed patio area. That would be on the condition that it goes through final inspection and is approved after construction and prior to use.
Does anyone have any questions for Deputy Clerk Vanen Hoofel?
With the inspection, is that going to include some type of fencing or anything? So it's, or is it just open?
It's going to, and Mark, I don't know if you want to take this at all.
We also have, we also have a gentleman here from Ticks, if we would like to offer him.
Yeah, the inspection would ensure that the patio area is up to village code.
Thank you, that's all I need.
Are there any questions for the proprietor? If there are no questions for the proprietor or no additional discussion, I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to extend the alcoholic beverage licensing application to Ticks Harbor Lights LLC Class B beer and Class B liquor.
Thank you, a motion on the floor to extend the amendment as noted by Trustee Schneider. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Andrews. Any further questions or discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Okay. Item number nine, public hearings. Request by Scott Sonnenbaum, care of Helen Kletzka, 1710 Lost Trail for approval of, one, a planned development district overlay to allow for duplexes, ordinance 2022-14, and, two, a four-lot certified survey map, western part of parcel SU 174, located on the northwest corner of Velp Avenue and Lost Trail, zoned rural residential. Zoning administrator, Dunks.
Thank you. We're looking at just over a 10-acre parcel here. This is the portion of the parcel that is west of Velp Avenue. There's a remnant portion on the east side also that is not included in this, because it currently is divided by the road, and will be recognized as a separate parcel when this goes through Brown County. Surrounding land, our highway business and ag use, there's some commercial and some single-family homes. It was recently rezoned a rural residential from ag farmland preservation. It is not currently in our sewer service area, and water is also not available. The certified survey map is creating four buildable lots. All four of those lots appear to meet our zoning requirements. Lots one through three do have a substantial amount of wetlands, but that does not affect the required amount of buildable property. Brown County is likely going to require a note referencing the stream and associated shoreline permits from the village when it goes through their reviews. Parkland dedication fee for the four lots created would be required of $1,200 if just CSM. The planned development district overlay is asking for duplexes on each of the four lots with reduced building setbacks from 45 feet to 35 feet. The duplex would act as a buffer from the highway commercial that it is zoned on the east side of Velp and what the future residential is likely to be developed on the west side further in a lost trail. We staffed it as some current concerns with the reduced setback on lot four because of it being the intersection with Lost Trail and Velp and looking to the north. We felt that the vehicles stacked in the driveway may restrict that, that vision from that corner, and that extra 10 feet of setback would, would be beneficial. Your motion from Planning Commission was to approve both. The PDD did limit that setback to 35 feet on lots one through three, leaving lot four. We also had notes that the driveways for lot four would be restricted, basically, again, to keep those driveways away from that intersection as far as, as possible, and not restrict that, being a 45 mile an hour speed limit out there. We did have some concerns from a public, public works and public safety standpoint. So the recommendation was for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board from Mr. Dunks?
Are you talking four duplexes?
Yes.
Is that really appropriate for a rural residential?
That's for you, you to determine. Planning Commission felt it was, because the east side of Velp is all zoned for highway business, and the likelihood of getting single-family homes with highway business across the street is far less than.
I mean, the lots, I'm fine, but the, I guess I have a little problem with duplexes there, much less four of them.
I guess the thought process, at least, I mean, we can invite Mr. Sonnenbaum up here to discuss what. to discuss what his thought process, that would probably be best. He's the expert in the area. I'm certainly not the expert. Is there, are there any other questions before, for Mr. Dunks?
I just have one quick question. So with a, with a duplex lot of this size, or duplexes on these lots of this size, how is, and we don't have sewer, so that would be septic?
Yes.
How does that work out with a lot that size? Is that usually going to be okay? Or are they going to run into problems because they're right next to a wetland? Just educate me, I guess.
No, your septic would, would go down into the soils. They would be sized for the number of bedrooms in each building and be sized appropriately. No, we have septics down along our bay shore.
Okay.
So am I concerned from my end of it? No, I'm not.
Thank you.
I'd be a lot more concerned if this was sitting on the Bay of Green Bay dumping it into that, you know, because then you're dumping it into the bay bottom almost.
Right, right into the water. But here it's going into a wetland that's going to continue to filtrate.
That's all controlled by Brown County. They've got, these are pretty substantial lots from that aspect. We've got septics on 40,000 square foot lots.
Well, yeah, when you count the wetland in it, I agree. That's why I was, that's kind of one of the reason I was asking that question. I'm looking at something that's almost what, a third of an acre? And I was imagining a duplex with the amount of flow required, I'm imagining the septic system must be pretty large for that.
It would be, yeah, probably double what you'd have for, for a home typically.
And I was just looking to be educated.
But then, you know, I, we don't know what if they're building three bedroom, I would expect a three bedroom duplex. You know, we've got some homes out in the rural that are five bedroom, but the systems are approved for it, so you're not really going much bigger than some of these houses that are going up today.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Dunks? Mr. Sonnenbaum, would you like to join us and maybe share your input regarding to trustee Eckert's concern?
My name and address?
Yes, please. As many times as I've heard it, I'd like to hear it one more time.
Scott Sonnenbaum, 2795 Stone Creek Circle in Swamaco. So, so yeah, we're proposing duplexes there as a buffer to go from the commercial to, to residential. So across the, to the east side of Velp Avenue right there, currently that's the Klitschka Lake Homestead with, with a, a house and a shop and a farm and whatever, but someday that will end up being a highway commercial there. So immediately to the west of Velp Avenue, it's going to be pretty challenging for me to sell single family lots right on Velp Avenue that are going to have businesses right across the street. As you do, like duplexes or multifamilies there that acts as a buffer to go to residential behind there. So with these lots being, you know, two acre lots, you've got, you know, a couple hundred feet, I think roughly, what, 300, 350 foot depth to those lots? That would be to the back of the lots further to the west. So somebody's going to end up having, you know, a 600 or 700 foot buffer off of Velp Avenue to their residential home. It's just going to make the subdivision behind here a lot easier for me to sell. So right now, we're not proposing anything as far as developing the, like farm fields behind here. I'm buying 120 some acres from the Klitschka family. Someday it'll happen, but just with the current state of the economy, I'm not really looking to put in a road or, you know, end up with, with a whole bunch of lots out there. We're just looking to put, put a few lots in and, and kind of, you know, pay down the, the debt on the property until we know what the, what the real estate market's going to look like, you know, moving forward.
Sorry, it just doesn't convince me and it just doesn't seem real appropriate for a rural residential.
Can I ask what you would like, what, what you would envision there?
Single family.
But i- if you were in the market for a single family home, would you want to buy the one right on Velp Avenue across the street from businesses? It's just, it's hard from a marketing standpoint. That's just, I guess, why we go with the multifamily.
Well, what will the duplexes be like?
Well, well duplexes right now, with building costs being what they are, most people building new duplexes, which I am not looking to do multifamily, but I know a bunch of builders that are. They're building nicer, higher end duplexes. So typically, they're looking at doctors going in and out of the area, Packer players, coaches, young professionals. I know a couple builders that are renting for, you know, $2,500 to $2,800 a month per side on the duplex because the, the cost of the duplex is in excess of $500,000. So if you're building a three bedroom duplex per size, you've got three bedrooms, two baths on each side, you know, you're going to have a, a minimum of probably $450,000 in the build job for the duplex that's without your land or your driveways or patios are well in septic. So, you know, you're going to have to have a, a pretty nice product out there in order to cash flow it.
Okay, I guess I'm not convinced that Packer players would go there, but.
Bruce Reba has a pretty good following and he's got a, a bunch of nice duplexes around. He's got a lot of Packer players, so.
But at the same time, it doesn't, doesn't, it's just another housing type. In addition to the buffer, in fact, there's commercial currently to the north. And, you know, it's a higher traffic, higher speed road, which tend to, you know, push the, the, or push the, the end user, if you're looking for a single family home, you know, higher traffic roadway, is a little more agreeable to someone that doesn't own it and is renting. And it's another housing type you can offer as a community. It just, you know, it's, it's, it's a good buffer. It's not an apartment building which everyone has a, you know, a negative connotation, but in reality, today's housing market is going towards a rental market or at least a healthy mix of them.
And there's nothing that says they will be rentals. Somebody could turn these, you know, just like on Snowshoe Trail, those look like duplexes, but they're all actually individual condo units. Each duplex is, is a condo association. So we're not, we're not, all we're doing is approving basically the duplex type of construction, not whether it's going to be rental or owner occupied.
And there's nothing to say that it has to be a duplex, a single family home.
Are there other questions for Mr. Sonnenbaum from the board? Okay, thank you. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to come forward, you are more than welcome to do so now. Please provide your name and address if you'd like to speak on this. I don't believe we have anyone. So discussion amongst the board.
Is there anything in the ordinance that bars the duplex from being in rural residential?
No.
I mean, I can provide the thought process from the planning and zoning commission, which is simply that, you know, we don't have an overhead map of this for the audience to see, but we have one in our packet. I drive by that to come here. That's right on my way. That's where I go. So across the street from here, you have a, basically a wide open field of farm, and then you have Highway 41 with a significant amount of traffic noise. There you go. And you go to the north and you have a, a small business. And to the east, it's a lot of businesses you move north. So I'm just guessing that that section that we see in between Velp and 41 on the west side of the road, at, at some point, that could be an extension of something that we have in the north. It, it's got very limited access, a- as we know, because you can access it either you have to go north from Brown Road or you have to come south from B. So prior to my joining the board, prior to all of us joining the board, you know, when this was being looked at before the highway was redone, this was going to be a major business area for Swamaco. However, the change in the exits, and this is, this is the discussion that we had in planning and zoning, the change in the exits really kind of isolates this. And nobody really is going to want to be building a house between Velp Avenue and Highway 41. So duplexes, for the most part, seem like the, the best idea. The fact that they are duplexes on large pieces of, of large lots means that whoever's going to live there is, is probably going to appreciate a large lot and take care of that lot in all likelihood. So the thought process was that for four duplexes in this area and also giving a, a additional type of housing that, that we don't have a lot of, this seemed like a good idea.
What kind of wetlands are there? Are they swampy or is it just wetland soils?
There's a stream that runs through there. There's usually a lot of water in there. There's a lot of what you would, what I would term wetland plants. Is there standing water? There is standing water in the stream that runs east and west, a little bit further north of this. There's really not too much standing water in the back, but it stays wet year round.
Because this was egg land and egg use, most of what is there is the wetland soils. There's some vegetation that may have come up. I don't even know if they actually stopped a full agricultural use of it yet or not. I know some of it has, but as long as they continue to crop it, you're not going to have the vegetation, but yeah.
They mow most of it for hay.
But it'd be reasonable to conclude that a person who would own that duplex could actually take care of that back area and keep it down and keep it looking nice, not being thwarted by water. I'm just curious on that.
They're allowed, you're still allowed to cut the wetlands.
But not if it's soaking wet.
Well, you can't, if you can't get in there, yeah.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, but it's been an egg use for, forever.
Last question. So does the, does the addition of the duplexes, I didn't, I didn't see it in here. Is there a stormwater issue that's related to this of any sort?
No, because he's not putting any, he's not adding any roads. So there is, there is no.
Driveways only.
There is no concerns from a stormwater requirement that, that they take into consideration, you know, not a subdivision. There's no additional roads. Otherwise, yes, they would have to take on and treat that stormwater.
Thank you.
Other questions? Or other comments?
Well, I have a comment that, you know, this, it's quite common to put duplexes on a road that is busy like that because it's not ideal for, for single family homes. I mean, people want to be a little bit more isolated with their homes that they could be there for 20, 30 years or more. So that, that's very common to see this. So I have no issues with.
Where else is it?
With this. All across the country, there's, there's stuff like this.
I guess my questions are over, I'd like a comment. It, it doesn't violate an ordinance. It's residential occupancy. It's not really high density. It's in a logical buffer zone place and I think it just makes sense to put it there.
Other comments from the board?
It's too long.
Uh, we're, I think we actually need two motions on this, right? We need a motion to approve a four lot certified map, and we would also need a secondary motion after that, depending on how that goes, to approve, deny the planned development district overlay.
Well, I'll kick it off with the motion to approve a four lot certified survey map on SU 174 with the following conditions: payment of the $1,200 parkland dedication fee and to meet the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor from trustee Schneider with regard to item one, to approve or to approve the four lot certified survey map on SU 174 with the conditions, A, payment of the $1,200 parkland dedication fee, and B, meet requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a second from trustee Andrews. Are there any further comments from the board at this time? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Motion carries 6-0. I would look for a motion on item two, the approval or denial of ordinance 2022-14, a planned development district overlay on the portion of SU 174 west of Velp Avenue with the conditions, I guess I better read these, the reduced setback to 35 feet on lots one and through three only, B, lot four will, will not be required to meet the corner duplex requirements of one unit accessing each street, C, driveway for lot four will be restricted to the following: one lost trail from the westerly property corner east 170 feet, and two, Velp Avenue from the northerly property corner south 165 feet. D, under permitted uses, production of crops shall be modified to read, any crops planted and/or harvested shall be strictly for soil stabilization or weed control after issuance of a building permit, not for any agricultural related uses, and E, payment of an additional $1,200 in park, $1,200 in parkland dedication fees at signing of the CSM. Do I have a motion on this?
So moved with, as noted.
Thank you. Trustee Schneider has offered a motion to approve or deny. Sorry.
Approve.
Thank you. A motion to approve. Do I have a second on this motion?
Second.
I had a second from trustee Ward. Any further thoughts or discussion from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oh, it is a roll call.
Andrews?
Aye.
Eckert?
Nay.
Ward?
Aye.
Romes?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Ben Rossum?
Aye.
Excellent. Motion carries 5-1. Okay. Moving along. We are on 9B, a request by Dorothy McAllister, 1948 School Lane, for approval of, one, a two lot certified survey map as prepared by Rob Harris, Harrison Associates Incorporated, and two, rezone of lot two of proposed certified survey map from agricultural farmland preservation to rural residential, ordinance 2022-15. Mr. Dunks?
Thank you. We are looking at just about a 17 and a half acre parcel or the portion of the parcel that is being considered on this certified survey map. There is additional land on the south side of School Lane. It is all one parcel. And again, because it's separated by the road, it would be recognized later as a separate property already by Brown County, so we do not have to address that. And it's not required to be shown. The property is served by public water. That connection will be required. Sewer is currently not available, so it would be a septic or private septic system on this. There is a deferred water assessment that would be due at the signing of the CSM. That fee is currently at $6,534.29. Parkland fee of $300 would be due at the creation of the additional lot. The parcel is zoned egg farmland preservation. We do have to meet some standards when we address that rezone. Number one, that the land, the rezoned land is better suited for use not allowed in farmland preservation. Lot two is actually going to be for the granddaughter to construct a single family home, which egg farmland, farmland preservation does not allow unless part of a farming operation. And they're not operating a farm. Somebody else is coming in and actually egging the property right now, so there's no farming operation taking place on that site. The rezone is consistent with any comprehensive plan adopted by the village. The map does show this as a future mixed use. Residential would be considered within that. The rezoning is substantially consistent with Brown County farmland preservation that was approved. This small amount of change does not affect that overall map for Swamaco in, in terms of acreage that is coming out, so it would be still consistent with that. And does not substantially impair or limit current or future egg use of other protected farmland. And again, it does not, it does not landlock any other farmland preservation acreage or anything. Everything pretty much on the east or on the north side of School Lane is accessible from School Lane or already in residential use. Motion by the planning commission was for approval of the two lot certified survey map and also approval of the rezone of lot two of that certified survey map from egg farmland preservation to rural residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for zoning administrator, Dunks?
Any plans for lot one? Not yet.
It's going to remain in egg use. It's still farmland preservation, so. All we're zoning out is lot two.
Okay.
This really boils down to grandmother wanting to split some land off so her granddaughter can build a house on it.
Yes.
Yep.
And we endorse family here in Swamaco.
That's, that we do.
If there's nothing else, I will make a motion to approve.
You need a public hearing. We've got to open it up. It's a public hearing.
I'll open up a public hearing.
If there's anyone who'd like to speak on this, this is the public hearing portion of our, of our evening. If you would like to come forward and have anything you'd like to share on this item, please do so now. All right. Hearing none, I would look for a motion.
I would like to make the motion to approve a two lot certified survey map. Uh, SU dash two eight seven with the following conditions. A rezone of lot two from agricultural farmland preservation to rural residential. Payment of a $300 parkland fee and a $6,534 and twenty-nine cent water deferred assessment. And that they meet the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee. Romus has made a motion to approve the two lot certified survey map of SU two eight seven with the conditions as stated. Is there a second to his motion?
Second.
We have a second from trustee Andrews. Is there any further discussion or questions from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. At this time, I would be looking for a motion on ordinance two zero two two dash one five, the rezone of lot two of the certified survey map. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two zero two two dash fifteen, a rezone of a two lot of the certified survey map approved on July eighteenth, 2022 on parcel SU two eight seven from agricultural farmland preservation to rural residential.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor from trustee Ward to approve ordinance two zero two two dash one five, rezone of a lot, of lot two of the certified survey map. Do I have a second to trustee Ward's motion?
Second.
Thank you. I have a second from trustee Eckert. Is there any further discussion or comment from the board? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call, please.
Andrews?
Aye.
Eckert?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Romus?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Ben Rossum?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Okay. We are off to nine C. Possible changes to chapter eighteen point zero eight, rural residential, three conditional uses. D, one horse per every two acres of the Swamaco Municipal Code, ordinance two zero two two dash one six. And we go back to zoning administrator Dunks.
Thank you. Um, at the May Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they had reviewed a request to rezone a parcel from rural residential to egg that was on the agenda. The main purpose of that request was for additional horses. That matter was referred back to look at the portion of our code that requires one horse, uh, limits it to one horse per two acres within the rural residence. Rural residential zoning and the conditional use that would allow for the horses within that. There was some questions as where that language came from that limited to one acre per two horses and whatnot. We were not able as staff to locate any documentation related to how much space is required or recommended to properly care for a horse. The grazing requirements are between one and three acres, depending on soil, precipitation, and growing seasons. Nothing says it's necessary to have any grazing space to properly care for a horse. You can supplement all feed. And none of this was ever addressed and, um, you know, the most important thing is, is the stable. The supplement, the feed in Wisconsin is going to be required anyway because obviously you're not going to be grazing in winter around here. Exercise is also important, but that can be done through trail use or other outside sources. When we look at how we've been approving these, we've just been looking at one horse per two acres. You know, it could be a fifty percent wooded lot of four acres in size and we're still allowing two horses. You've got the, the home itself and then the, the structures. There, there's not enough land there to graze them during the summer even. So are we really, you know, what, what benefit does that one horse per two acres provide? So at planning commission, we discussed that. Um, we talked about just, um, requiring horses on a minimum of a two acre lot before they can apply for it and just looking at it site by site. We can put any conditions we want on those conditional uses. If it's a smaller site and they're asking for, you know, more dense, I guess, population of horses and, and it's still a large wooded area. You know, there's, there's options for us at the time we examine this to put conditions, especially as the lots, the usable portions of the lot get smaller. The other option was to look at it, you know, if we're going to hold to that, we need to hold it to two acres of land to be used by each horse, not just two acres per lot. And that's where it came. And, and their recommendation was to just change the language to allow horses as a conditional use. But you must have a minimum of a two acre lot to apply for that.
And you're not looking at retroactively going back?
No.
This is only going forward?
This is only going forward.
Okay.
If we choose to change that ordinance, that individual that requested to go from rural residential to egg will be brought back to planning and zoning commission as a modification to their conditional use rather than a rezone to add an additional horse to that. But until this ordinance is changed, we can't do that, so.
I want to be clear on something that you just asked. So, uh, when you say go back.
Retroactive.
If I say I have three acres right now and I have one horse, and I've always really wanted a second horse. Would I now be able to have that second horse?
You, you would be able to approach the planning commission and the village board and ask for your conditional use to be.
I'd follow the same process.
To be modified. You'd, you'd be, would you have a, you know, a charge for that? But yes, you would be able to alter that conditional use.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to be clear on that statement.
So the way it was and the way we're talking about tonight, either way, they'd have to get that conditional use?
Yes.
Okay.
Did, did you research or is there even a way to do that back when this ordinance was initially created? As to why people felt the need to legislate the number of horses on a certain amount of land and not leave that up? I'm curious at that meeting, someone decided that this ordinance had to happen. And I'm kind of wondering what the history was there, or maybe that wasn't even documented. Okay.
Yeah, maybe it's in the minutes. I mean, you'd have to go back long before, I mean, before my time that, I mean, this has been on the books since prior, way before 2010. I mean, I, I think this has been on since.
And it may have just been a, you know, it may have been a copy paste from another ordinance too.
Yeah, you know, see, so in planning and zoning, the way that this all started was there was an individual, this, this seems to be like the evening of my neighborhood. So there, there was this individual within my neighborhood who has two horses. He has five, five acres. He wanted to get another horse. The situation is his daughter has moved away. They have a horse that they're boarding in Madison. She wants to keep her horse. They want the horse to come live with them. However, he does not have enough acreage to, he wanted to rezone his property from rural residential to egg. So that he could get more than two horses on that piece of property. However, he doesn't have enough acreage to do that. Or did?
Yes, on an egg parcel, we do not regulate.
Right. So he, he wanted to get that rezone. So the problem with that is this is all, I mean, this is very much rural residential. These are homes on forested property type of things. I think he's probably got five acres. That's most of the houses around like that. He, the neighbors, when you rezone to egg, what happens is he can have whatever animals he wants, as many as he wants. So not that he would do it. He wants it for horses, but maybe the next person likes pot-bellied pigs. Well, that probably wouldn't be real good.
Yeah, I, I get, I think.
Okay.
I appreciate the bags.
Sorry.
No, don't be sorry. I appreciate the, the history of it. I always ask myself, when people legislate, why did they possibly do something like this? So there, so for some reason, someone felt it was important to set this rule where we allow only one horse for every two acres. And I think that's poor legislation personally. I, I know that there's got to be a line, but once that line is crossed, you know, if you're a certain type lot of certain size, then you should be able to have horses. And then you may have a person who is, takes wonderful care of their horse on a, on a two point one acre lot and they could have ten horses there and no one would ever know. No one would ever notice, right? They take great care. But you could have another person on a five acre lot that just doesn't really take great care of their horses. You know, and they shouldn't have more than one. So. Yeah. I'm, I'm for removing the restrictions and putting them more toward, and it looks like this, what this motion essentially is doing is decreasing this arbitrary two acre per hor, maybe not arbitrary, unknown why it's there. Two acre per horse restriction and making it more of a reasonable decision between the people.
It's also a conditional use though, so that's the important.
Right.
So as a conditional use, a conditional use is, is given, but it also can be taken away.
That's right.
Well, it's also because that two acres isn't required to be pasture anyway.
Right.
That doesn't really matter, so.
So if there's complaints with regard to horses, I mean, I won't.
You can act on it.
I won't indulge you with too much of another story, but again, in my neighborhood.
That's okay.
Not these horses, but we have a lot of horses in my neighborhood. There's four or five who come circling around. Never had a problem before, but recently we've started to have some issues and I've had some complaints from neighbors where horses are leaving some things behind that'd be better picked up.
Fertilizer.
Um, typically they are, but that hasn't happened. So if that's the case, that would be a case where if you were able to understand who that owner is or if they didn't remove their manure, um, you know, appropriately, you could revoke that conditional use. And for most folks, they have a pretty big investment in horses, so they're not going to let that happen. So I, I'm good. I'm good with this.
Same problem with dogs.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, it's like any animal. Just smaller pies. Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions from the board from Mr. Dunks or comments? Otherwise, we'll open it up for public hearing. All right. Anybody out in the audience who would like to come forward to speak to this item, on this item, share any comments that you have? Please come forward now. Share your name and address and let us know what's on your mind. We never have this quiet a group. All right. Thank you.
I'll change that.
So we don't have any public comment. Um, at this time, I would look for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance two zero two two dash sixteen, changing chapter eighteen dot zero eight. Parent three, parent D, eliminating the one horse per two acre requirement. To require a minimum of two acres to apply for a conditional use for horses.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve of this ordinance change by trustee Ward. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second on the floor by trustee Romus. Any further discussion or comments from the board? May I have a roll call, please?
Andrews?
Aye.
Eckert?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Romus?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Ben Rossum?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero. Okay. Moving on, we are now at item number ten, planning and zoning items requested by Scott Sonnen, care of Helen Kleczka, seventeen ten Lost Trail for approval of a four lot certified survey map on parcel SU one seven three located on the north side of Lost Trail, four hundred feet west of Velp Avenue. All right, and this is zoning administrator Dunks.
Thank you. We are looking at a thirty-nine plus acre parcel here. Three of the four lots will be buildable lots. So we have three buildable lots and one outlot reserved for future development. This was recently rezoned to rural residential. It is outside your sewer service area and also does not have water available. Lot one does appear to have a substantial amount of wetlands, but there still is ample buildable area in the northwest corner of that property. Again, Brown County will likely require a note referencing the stream and associated shoreland permit requirements from the village. Parkland dedication fees of $900 for the three new lots. Planning commission's motion was to recommend approval with the payment of that parkland dedication fee and meeting requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Dunks from the board? Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this? We can open the floor up. If there are no, if there are no questions and there is no one interested in speaking, I would be happy to accept, accept a motion on this.
I'll make a motion, um, let's see, to approve a four lot certified survey map on SU one seventy-three with the following conditions. Payment of the $900 parkland dedication fee, meet the requirements of all their applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor from trustee Schneider to approve the four lot certified map, SU one seventy-three, with the conditions as stated. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a second from trustee Ward. Any further discussion or comments from the board? Hearing none. May I please have a roll call on this?
No, this is just standard.
Uh.
You're requested.
It is an, I would.
Has the power to ask for it.
Two zero two two one four. If I could have a roll call, please.
Andrews?
Aye.
Eckert?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Romus?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Ben Rossum?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All right. Just getting my bearings here. Thank you. Moving on to item eleven, recreation department, stained glass, uh, class at Mink Ranch, utility bills. Director Lemke, if you would.
Thank you. Swamaco stained glass instructor and renter of the Mink Ranch building has agreed to pay all utilities, including sewer and water expenses on a monthly basis beginning on August first. If utility costs are less than the tenant's current rental fee of $500 per month, which is highly unlikely, the $500 rental fee will be charged for that particular month. So in August, we will get the bills for the July utility usage and we will invoice the renter accordingly.
Thank you. Thank you. And that will all go to the sewer utility?
Yes.
Thank you. I didn't do it. They did it.
Well, you brought it up.
Um, is there, in the past? Is there, is there a way of knowing what, what the sewer department did pay for?
Well, keep in mind that back in 2016, when there was nobody in that building, we were still incurring about $300 per month in WPS bills. So in my opinion, she has never gone over that amount. We've never lost money on it. The utility hasn't been losing money because of the program.
In your opinion, but at least.
In data, in, in facts and data.
Forward, we're doing the right thing here. Thank you.
So no action on this. Strictly for information, action's been already taken.
Moving on.
All right. Anything else on that? Hearing nothing. Item twelve, financial items. ARPA Investment Strategy. Director Lee Joyce.
Thank you. The village has received approximately, or I should say, the, the total funds that we have on hand from the American Rescue Plan Act are approximately $1.4 million with interest. That's accrued since the first payment last June. That's invested in, um, a money market account at Fortify, earning the local government investment pool rate plus 10%, which currently is about 0.72%. There were previous board discussions regarding utilizing the ARPA funds for the Lineville Road expansion. If that is the case, we are not expected to need approximately $1.1 million of the funds until 2024. So I did reach out to six local financial institutions for investment options and quotes. The top three for various terms are summarized for you in, in the memo. So those are 12-month, 18-month, and 24-month terms. Alternatively, um, you can leave the dollars where they are now. That would earn us about $16,000 over two years at the current rate. However, if you're interested in investing some of the funds in a CD, BMO overall is offering the best rates. And in general, we could earn approximately $52,000 in interest over two years. There's not a lot of differential between the 12, 18, and 24-month, um, interest rates at this time. So I'm just looking for direction from the board.
Those are crappy rates, but I, I don't see, I don't see it going up for a couple more years. So.
I also want to chime in. So technically, director Lee Joyce has the authority to make these types of investment decisions on her own. However, these ARPA dollars are maybe a once-in-a-lifetime situation. maybe a once-in-a-lifetime situation, and we haven't, as a board, taken official action on what you want to do with these dollars. So I wanted to get more concrete direction from the Village Board that if you do want to use these dollars on the Lineville Expansion project, then you would make a motion to invest these in a longer-term CD. So that's why it's before you tonight. You typically don't take action on investment strategy.
So are you, by making a motion on this tonight, we're tying these dollars to the Lineville?
You're not tying yourself to the Lineville, but you're taking away the opportunity to spend it on something else in the meantime?
Today, they're tied up for.
I see. Okay, thank you.
So you're making that, another baby step towards solidifying the fact that yes, you want it for the Lineville project?
You can also look at what other people are doing if they're spending them earlier to see if there aren't awful strings attached. So we have two years then to look and watch and hold on to.
An extra $52,000.
Sure, sure.
I would say one thing, though. I don't know, in, in my experience, as the economy goes into inflation, interest rates go up. We would see, I would think, as inflation continues, unless we're predicting it's going to stop, would we see greater interest rates typically down the road? So for instance, if we got into a 12-month, is it more reasonable to expect we would see a higher interest rate, allowing that inflation, crystal ball time?
Yeah, I tend to say, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball.
I get it. I understand it's a crystal ball.
However, the interest.
But if it does continue to trend, then we would normally expect to see our interest rate return increase as well, right?
We have seen the interest rates go up each of the last few months. That would not be.
So we're still lagging inflation. I think I saw inflation, was that 9% now? I mean, that's just the reality of it, right?
But even as inflation's been going up, I see the CD rates and money market rates going down. And that's, that's what I've been seeing.
Okay. No, that's interesting.
But I don't know what, have you been seeing them go up?
Uh, short-term money market rates definitely have gone up.
Have they?
If you, if you look at our monthly treasures report that comes out, I want to say it was at, I don't know, maybe 0.1%, and then it recently jumped to 0.3, and now we're up to this, you know, 0.72. So it has been still pretty low, but I mean, it has been steadily.
So you're talking about a half a percent.
The reason I bring that up is I would tend to go with the shorter term if I could at this time.
So how quickly would you, so if you, how quickly would you be able, if, if it was the board's decision to move forward with the BMO Harris Bank, 2.362% for 12 months, how quickly would you be able to get us into that?
I would contact them tomorrow.
Okay. And it's a relatively quick process?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the reason I ask is because the Federal Reserve is going to be meeting very shortly, and in all likelihood, we're going to be seeing a substantial interest increase. And with that, money is, we're going to probably see a decrease in the interest rate that we would earn here, I suspect. No?
It's, well, not that we would earn here because BMO is offering this as the minimum interest rate.
The minimum, thank you. I couldn't listen carefully enough. Yes, please. Okay. I have no more questions.
I'm following Mike's, that was my same thought. I'm following that same thought process that with the way things are currently going, I would like to reassess this in 12 months. I'm more in favor of that avenue.
You might get even less then, but I mean, I guess that in the grand scheme of things, that's not a huge deal. But, you know, that number could be a lot less.
It could be, it could also be more. But we'd still make $52,000?
Not for one year.
Not for, no, it's, that's going off, uh, two years.
Two years.
Could you elaborate on the minimum statement? I'm, I'm not following that. So this, will it be variable?
No, it, it will be a fixed rate, however, because of the, the timing of when we would get quotes, when the board meets and makes a decision, I had to work with them to see if they would guarantee a rate until after a decision could be made.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more in favor of the 12-month option. I, for two reasons. One, in case we were to need this money for something. It's not locked up past 12 months. If something pops up and we need it. And secondly, I, I truly believe the interest rate will go up and not down.
I think it'll go down. I'm okay with 12. Even, even if it were 24, though, you could, you, and you had to have the money, you can break it with a penalty. How, how big are the penalties?
I have not read the fine print on each of the quotes, but usually it's, you know, a couple of months' interest. For example, like if you had I-bonds today, I believe it's three months' interest if you cash out early.
So if you're figuring 26,000 and 12 months, if you take that, that's 2,000. So a couple months would be a $4,000 penalty, roughly, by, by what you're saying.
So I guess you're not looking for a motion necessarily on this. You're just looking for direction, correct?
I'd like to see a motion.
You shall have one, then. Is there anyone who would like to offer a motion? Otherwise, I, I would offer a motion.
Um, go ahead.
I try not to do that very often. So I would offer a motion that we direct staff to invest these funds in the BMO Harris Bank for 12 months. Second. With BMO Harris Bank for 12 months. Thank you. So motion on the floor to invest with BMO Harris for 12 months. And we have a second by trustee Schneider. Any further discussion or thoughts from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
See how our crystal balls work out.
Nothing like gambling. Okay, item 13, discussion on future agenda items. Anyone?
That's a pretty safe gamble.
I have one item I'd like to see in the future agenda item. So last, the last meeting, I was unable to attend. I was away. But there was a lot of discussion, and I would like to get on the agenda for our next meeting, this discussion on roads and, and our changes that we advocate with regard to speed and precedence being set with that. Because I think that, I think we're, we're, well, we'll save it for discussion in that meeting. So I would like to see that as a discussion for next meeting.
So what kind of information are you looking for from staff, or do you just want to have a general conversation about the process that you'd like to see folks go through?
Since you, since you asked, since you asked for additional work.
You're going to get it.
No, I, I know that we have, we have guidelines that we utilize for setting speed and changing speeds within this community. And I know that we've, Mr. Bizani has gone off, Deputy Sheriff Bizani has gone, but having discussions or listening to his discussion, he presented pretty detailed information in terms of, of the use of the 85th percentile and crash history and placards, speed placards. I, maybe just having that information in the minutes in detail from that, that meeting would be of interest to me. And also, one other piece, actually. So at what time in the, in our history in the Village of Swamaco did we begin to use the 85th percentile and that criteria? How long have we had that criteria in place? Okay. Anybody else have, with regard to that, anything that they'd like to see? I know that you discussed it thoroughly in the last meeting, but is there anything else that anyone else would like to see? I'm good. Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Any other items that folks would like to see on the next agenda?
I will make a motion then to go into closed session under 19.85, param one, param G, referring with legal counsel for governmental body who is rendering oral written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, is likely to become involved, as well as 1985, param one, param E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties with investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business wherever they're competitive or bargaining reasons. Require a closed session, and it's under parcel SU-295 and tit four.
Thank you. Motion on the floor to move into closed section to consider items A and B as referenced. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee, trustee Andrews. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you, everyone.